The United States of America and through the Republic wishes stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Almighty and everlasting God who presides over all things in heaven and earth, come and preside over these deliberations so that those who make the decisions may be guided by your wisdom.
Okay. Welcome to the special meeting of city council, September 19th, 2024 regarding three pending local share assessment grant applications.
Roll call, Mr. Belishko.
Here.
Mrs. McClay.
Here.
Mr. Mearon.
Here.
Mr. Brooks.
Here.
Mr. Barrett.
Here.
Also intenances is Mayor George Brown, Administrator Charles McCormick, City Attorney Tim Henry, Assistant City Clerk Tracy Smith, Administrative Assistant Lisa Sanfilippo.
Okay. Mayor.
I didn't see him get up.
Seems like I was just here a couple of days ago. It was a couple of days ago, right, Mike?
Yep.
Okay. Well, we have three more LSA resolutions to go before your council tonight. First one is facilitate and assist obtaining a local share assessment grant in the amount of $425,000 to be used for the Volunteers in Medicine general building renovation project. Someone here from volunteers.
Over here, Mayor. State your name for their.
I didn't see you outside. So, council, if you have any questions?
No. What would, I think we'd all appreciate a brief synopsis of what the project would entail. You can start by your name and your position.
Sure. So, I'm Kelly Rennelly. I'm the Executive Director of Volunteers in Medicine. We have been at 190 North Pennsylvania Avenue, the old buzzy bazaar building, for 16 years. We're a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization, and we provide free healthcare services to the population that are working. They're not eligible for Medicaid, but their income is low and they can't afford health insurance. So, our whole goal is to keep our community healthy and well so they can work, stay out of poverty, and provide for their families. The building, since we've been there for 16 years, we have the medical clinic and we have a full-service dental clinic. And we expanded services. We have behavioral health services. We have specialty services. We provide free medications. We have a health equity program where we help patients with, like, for example, food insecurity. We provide about 150 bags of food on Monday afternoons. So, we provide a lot of different services. What we are experiencing now is an influx of new patients, a huge influx of new patients. So, what we need to do is to renovate the second floor of our building, and then on the main floor, if you're familiar with the building over by Turkey Hill, there's space as well. So, we are going to create five new programs, and we really just need to increase access to a lot of different healthcare programs based on the need of Luzerne County and our community.
Did you say you were expanding, buying the building next door?
No, no. It's all, we own the building. Expanding access to care, expanding services, yeah. Increasing services, basically.
But how many people do you see a year?
Well, we see about 3,200.
3,200.
Yeah. Yeah. That equates to about 9,000 visits because a lot of patients have not had healthcare, insurance, medical insurance, dental insurance. So, they come to us and they need a lot of help. So, yeah, we're busy, and we're busier than we've ever been, and we're getting busier. Again, we're for that particular population that are working really hard. They're not eligible for Medicaid, but they just can't afford health insurance. We had one patient recently, a single mother of two, and she said, "All I want to do is stay healthy and make my daughters proud and work and provide for them."
This the total cost of the building renovation project?
It's about $3 million. Mm-hmm. Now, we did, Senator Casey and Senator Fetterman, they understand that we're providing critical healthcare services. So, we just got an award for $875,000 from them, which is available starting October 1st. So, and then we have a capital campaign as well. We're not federally funded. We are a nonprofit 501(c)(3). We only operate through donations and grants and proceeds from special events, and all our services are free.
Any other questions, council?
Your parking lot on the side, is that the only parking you have available for that?
Currently, yes.
Okay. So, are you, with the extended services, you're going to look for?
Yes. Yep, absolutely. And I do want to say that we've, for the last 16 years, we're very proud to be in Wilkes-Barre. And again, we don't charge for services. We only operate on donations and grants and proceeds from special events. We did just get a roof through private donations. That was $180,000. We just finished that up about a month ago. We have paved the parking lot that we have. We painted the building last year to try to increase our curb appeal, try to landscape, try to pick up the garbage every day. So, we do our best to be good neighbors in Wilkes-Barre.
Now, how many more people will you be able to serve if you get a second floor?
Well, again, so, we don't only provide medical and dental care, but we also have a lot of specialty providers. So, we have a chiropractor. We have a physical therapist. We have a psychiatric nurse practitioner. Our behavioral health program, right now, we have a social worker, and we have a psychiatric nurse practitioner, and we have a licensed counselor. We could use a couple more of those, obviously. We have another chiropractor that wants to volunteer, so we need to move those up to the second floor to, we're just out of space.
It's amazing what you guys do.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, it's hard to say approximately how many more people, but...
It'll help.
As many as I can, as many as we can. Yeah.
Questions? Mayor, I think we're good.
Kelly, if council at some time wanted to take a tour, like you've taken me...
Yeah, I'd love to see the place.
Yep.
If you're interested, I'm sure that you'd be able to take, actually see what the people do over there. It's an amazing organization, and what they provide is just amazing. I'm going to offer an invitation.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Do you want to take a tour?
Yep.
It's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll move on to the second one. By the way, if I can just stop, I just want to say that Mark Barrett did a fantastic job when the folks came to us just recently and said, you know, "We want to put an LSA grant in application." It was actually after the 14 that we submitted last week, but still within the deadline. And folks came in, they spoke with Mark, they worked with Mark, Mark could work with them to do the application itself, but for the resolution. So, I just want to thank Mark Barry for what he did to get it done for tonight's meeting, and he'll be working with them right till the end of this month. Okay? Also, next one is to assist in obtaining a local share assessment grant in the amount of $200,000 to be used for the Wright Center Wilkes-Barre Hub Accessibility and Beautification Project if the application is approved. And I know we have some great people from the Wright Center here today.
We're tagged, too.
Great. Sure. Well, thank you so much for having us. Thanks, Mayor Brown. My name's Bill Wexler. I'm the Director of Government Affairs for the Wright Center for Community Health.
I'm Ron Daniels, the Chief Administrative Officer.
So, just a little bit about our project quickly. So, we're down here specifically for our Wilkes-Barre Health City Hub, which is just over on North Pennsylvania Avenue, 169 North Pennsylvania Avenue. So, specifically for this LSA, it's $200,000 for outside exterior renovation. So, specifically sidewalks, beautification projects. We'd like to basically incorporate accessibility to make sure that our patients are able to access the building safely, effectively, but also with doing that beautification project. So, we'd really like to incorporate some community art, specifically the "B," so we're calling it the "B-utification" project. A little pun there, a little bit of play on words. But that specifically on the project, we'd love to talk a little bit more about our vision for the Health City Hub in general, which is what we're calling our whole vision for the clinic. We've been down, we opened the clinic in January of 2023. We have a huge vision for the project down there. We've been so grateful for Wilkes-Barre's support. We operate 12 clinics throughout northeastern Pennsylvania. We just opened up another one, so I just looked at Ron for support for that. But we open, we, and we serve about 35,000 patients annually throughout northeastern Pennsylvania. And we've been so grateful for the mayor's support and everyone's support in Wilkes-Barre as we opened up down here. And so, I think I'll turn it over to Ron for some more information on Health City Hub and our big vision in general.
So, we acquired the property at 169 North Pennsylvania Avenue back in the fall of '22. We were able to open about a quarter of that building. It's 35,000 square feet. We opened up 9,000 feet initially in January '23 for the medical portion. Then, then we finished the behavioral health and dental, and that just opened up this July, August. So, we have all of those services now. There's a small portion of the building that still has to be finished that's, should be done by the end of December, early January. Then, we've also applied for a new market tax credit project, which, if that gets approved, we're looking at the potential to put up a 45,000-square-foot addition on that property and all that paperwork and the works. We're expand, we'll be expanding services to do more long-term care. And when I say that, it's like people that are on a plan that has to deal with hypertension, diabetes, things like that, that aren't just a visit to the doctor, one and done. It's things that take counseling for an hour or so. That will go into the new building that we're hoping to build. All that being said, to tie that into what Amy said, when you have all the heavy equipment finally coming in to do the, some of this construction, we're going to be like ruining some sidewalks and paving and things, and we've got to be able to fix those things before the new building would open up. So, that's how it all ties together.
I think just, sorry, a little bit more on our organization I should have shared, too. So, the Wright Center for Community Health, we are federally qualified healthcare center look-alike. So, if you're unfamiliar with what those are, it's a federally qualified healthcare center look-alike is deemed by HERSA, so, through the federal government, sorry. We do not turn away anyone for services, so we provide care for anyone regardless of their ability to pay. So, we provide care on a sliding fee. So, if you come in and you have insurance, it's on a sliding fee based on that. If you come in and you can't afford it, you know, it's all based on that sliding fee. So, some folks do come in and get, you know, free services. Some folks come in on that sliding fee. So, that's very important to us. We care about the community. We do wraparound services, so we really focus on those social determinants of health. So, folks come in, they have a screening for, is your housing safe? Do you have access to transportation? You know, all of those key pieces to make sure that we're really providing that whole person care and trying to make sure everyone has access to those services. So, we really try to be an integral part of the community. And so, part of coming into Wilkes-Barre, you know, within the last, I guess now it's been almost two years, really, we've really been trying to connect with the community. And so, I think we've been really trying to really focus and continue to do that. And so, this is just another way that we are really trying to focus and, you know, work with the community because this is something that is very important to us because we want to utilize all of the services that are in the community. And we provide behavioral health services, dental care, primary care services, all of the, it's a one-stop shop. When you come in, you can pretty much get all of the care for, for everyone.
The new building that you're going to build, I know it's different, but I'm curious about that.
Right.
And if it gets approved, the 45,000 square feet, and you already have 35,000?
Yes.
Are you going up?
Yes. It'd be, the footer would be 15,000 square feet in a three-story building.
That would be okay.
Yes.
That would be adequate. Oh, wonderful.
Yes.
Wonderful. Are you a nonprofit?
Yes, we are.
As for "B-utification," I think that's wonderful.
That's pretty cool, play on words.
Yeah. So, thank you.
I do have a question. So, you do own the parking lot across the street, correct?
Correct.
Do you plan on redoing those sidewalks? Because right now, they, a lot of them have little, I don't...
Yeah, we're going to redo that whole property.
Okay. So, that's included with this? These sidewalks are?
It may be an addition to, yeah, because there's quite a bit of linear feet that have to be covered.
Okay, yeah, because I'm not sure what happened with those sidewalks. Somebody cut squares in them. I'm not sure why.
Yeah, the plan would be to work with the city to make sure that we have the right entrance and exit from that parking lot before we even put it into use. So, that's going to be one of the latter stages.
I have another question. Are trees part of your beautification?
Yes.
Great, great. Thank you.
Yes.
There needs to be trees on that block.
Yes, yes. Actually, I'm not sure how much I can say down here, but yeah, we've had quite a few meetings with Larry Newman, and we're going to work together on all those things.
Good.
Yes.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Once again, I think you've been open to council, taking your tour.
Yes, absolutely.
You'll be so impressed by what the Wright Center does. It's amazing. But please, if you'd like to take a major tour, you can do that for the Wright Center, or Volunteers in Medicine, if you want to do a tour there, I'd be happy to set that up for you.
Okay.
Yeah, we'd love to have you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Lastly, once again, facilitate or assist in obtaining a local share assessment grant in the amount of $50,000 to be used for the Northeast Counseling Services Building Renovation Project.
I retired three and a half years ago.
Congratulations.
Well, kind of.
You did a lousy job of retiring.
It was a good retirement. But I've been with Northeast Counseling Services 46 years.
Wow.
I'm a licensed psychologist, and I was asked to come back based on some issues that we were having with some individuals that took over the agency after myself and another gentleman left. One of our staff is...
Can I interrupt your name for the record, please?
Joseph Mullay. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't...
Sorry to interrupt.
That's okay. One of our staff members knows Mayor Brown for a long time, so I asked if she would reach out and get an appointment so we could come and talk about what may be available in the city of Wilkes-Barre. And so, we had an appointment with, you know, Mayor Brown on Monday, and surprise, I learned that by Thursday, this stuff had to be done. I would have asked for a much bigger amount also. I'm sure you folks all know about Community Counseling Services. They were a fixture in Wilkes-Barre for many, many years. They decided that they no longer wanted to provide behavioral health services. Someone had to take care of those individuals. We stepped up to the plate. It was a major financial decision. We were under the gun to find housing, I shouldn't say housing, places to house our staff and to treat the 4,000 or 5,000 people that needed our care. So, we rented from, we're in the Jewel Core building as part of our operation, and we're in a building in the East End Center. Major, major leases rate, the rentals are just off the scale. It's putting a major financial burden on our ability to maintain at least our children's services in the East End building. We also run a personal care home on Franklin Street. We inherited that from Community Counseling. Serves about eight individuals, great facility. But on that property, there is a building in the back. So, when I came in to kind of look at restructuring and seeing what we needed to do to kind of get ourselves back in line, I thought, well, we can renovate that building and use it. It's been vacant. It's not in terrible shape, but it needs renovation to be habitable at this point. We want to stay in Wilkes-Barre. We serve all of the Wilkes-Barre School District. You're very familiar with the mental health issues in this country, children that have autism. We serve that population, mostly through medical assistance. It's a population that's real a specialty, and not everyone wants to or can do it. We've elected to do it based on, you know, the need, and somebody's got to do it. So, Mayor Brown said $50,000. That was an estimate that I kind of was asked, how much do I think it was going to cost? And so, I quickly was able to get a licensed Wilkes-Barre contractor to come in and give an estimate. And it's going to run about $38,225 to get, and that's, you know, that's kind of the ballpark we're in. We have 44 staff that will be working out of that building. Now, don't be alarmed by that. It's a small building. As I said before, the staff that we have work out of the schools for the most part. The services are provided in community-based settings, home, school, community, really where it's ever necessary. It's not office-based. So, it'd kind of be a place to, if they need to come in for something, do their notes and things like that. So, we're not going to house 44 people in a small-sized building. But we really appreciate, you know, your consideration because it's going to make the difference between us being able to stay in the Wilkes-Barre area and not. I'd have to move the operation. We still are into the lease. We do have to run through the leasers. The individual signed the lease. There's no out clause, so we're kind of stuck in the lease for a while. So, I would appreciate you considering this grant, which would allow us to continue providing the care to your school districts and the families in the Wilkes-Barre area.
Where is the building actually located? Yeah, where's the building?
320 Franklin Street.
North Franklin, South Franklin?
Next to Children's Service Center. I don't know if that's what it says.
320.
It's behind the building. It's behind the building there.
Okay, I think I know.
You'd be moving your staff in the East End Center to Wilkes-Barre, correct?
Yes, yeah, to that building, yeah. Yeah, because again, we want to, we have a presence that we've established since taking over Community Counseling within the Wilkes-Barre School District, and we serve all the buildings. I mean, if you're familiar with, you know, autistic children, they need a lot of redirection, modeling, and medication management, and we do all that.
I work with the Wilkes-Barre School District, and your services are so valuable. We would hate to see you leave our area.
I mean, to be quite honest with you, if I had the time, I would have been, I would have asked for much more. We need a building.
No, it's very, very important. I work with some of those kids every day, and they're, trust me, that we need you.
Yeah. So, I hope to come before you if this grant is approved in the future because we do need a building. We want a presence in Wilkes-Barre, and we can't afford the rents. Typically, we're nonprofit 501(c)(3). We serve the indigent population, and we, you know, there's no money. I mean, we want to pay our staff, and we'd rather pay staff and give benefits rather than paying a landlord.
Yeah.
So, I certainly appreciate all the consideration you give us.
Council?
Okay. Anybody?
Okay, Mayor, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Anybody want to speak?
These are three great worthwhile projects, and I wholeheartedly ask you to consider, you know, passing this on to the next level, which would be Senator Flynn and Mr. Piszynski for their consideration. But as you know, all 17 of these LSAs I passed through my office and asking for your consideration to pass them on to the next level. Okay?
Anyone here care to comment on these pending resolutions? If you do, Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Come on, Ken. If you wish, comment on the three resolutions.
Not the other ones from the other night?
No, right here.
I get an extra couple of minutes? Mr. Barrett, Tim Henry said I could ask for it and pay me...
You can ask all you want.
Can I get an extra couple of minutes? Because I didn't get...
We only have three resolutions here tonight.
It's funny how the presenters get as much time as they want. We get only five minutes now?
You're using your time right now.
All right. Five minutes, that's it?
All right, go ahead.
I think I, I don't know where to begin with five minutes, but the other night, I think, was a complete farce.
Let's not go back to the other night, okay? We have three items. This is all we're going to talk about tonight, not what went on last week.
All right, let me ask specifically, I did ask one young lady about this, all these nonprofit groups, I have nothing against them personally. I mean, they fulfill, you know, needed services. But I have a question in general about the LSA program here. Everybody and their brother is coming to dip in the public trough. I'm, maybe you know, Mr. Barrett, because nobody else seems to know. I don't think Charlie or the mayor know. Originally, this program was, was put, the legislation for this program was passed, I found out, in 2004. I'm talking about the LSA program, you know, the one by which you're giving them all this money or trying to get. I know that money has to come through. It has to be approved by Harrisburg and all that, the finance authority. But as far as I understand, I still don't get an answer from our public officials. What was the original intent of this program? I thought it was to lower taxes and for the money to go back into the community. This money, I think, first of all, I'm not sure how these figures are arrived at and how much, for instance, $425,000, a lot of money. So is 200, so is 50 even. Can we be sure, this is public money, LSA money, right? How can we be sure as members of the public that this money is going to where it's supposed to go, that these figures are not just arbitrarily drawn out of thin air, and that some of this money won't be going to, for salaries or for people to buy cars or something? And I'm not, no, I'm not putting anybody down here, not being that cynical. But maybe you can answer this, Mr. Brown, or somebody. There is, I assume, some sort of auditor, state auditor on the beat here to make sure that this money is used the way it's supposed to be used. But you have a lot, the other day was what, eight or nine programs? In this case, you don't have money going directly to for-profit corporations, which is good. Whatever happened, by the way, to old-fashioned borrowing from the bank, if you want to? Look, wouldn't it be more advisable to save some of this money to go directly into the neighborhoods which are deteriorating in this city? Maybe like the Beautiful Blocks program they have in Pittston, which you don't think is comparable to the city of Wilkes-Barre, Mayor Brown? I don't know why. They're off and running. That city is miles and miles ahead of this city in every way. How much time do we got left there? There's no clock. I can't see it.
Just stay on the resolutions, please. We're not talking about Pittston. Stay on the resolutions.
I didn't hear you, Mr. Barrett.
Stay on the resolutions. We're not speaking about Pittston or Mary Lombardo or anybody else. Resolutions, okay?
Okay, well, I'm just, in general, since I am challenging the fact that this program, I think, is not being adhered to according to the stipulations, because nobody here seems to know what the stipulations are. The money should be going back directly into the neighborhoods to benefit the citizens for whatever reason. Maybe to build a swimming pool, maybe to build an athletic facility like they have in Kingston, maybe to beautify, maybe to renovate homes that are becoming dilapidated, neighborhoods that are becoming dilapidated. So, maybe council, by some strange twist of fate, should put this on the back burner and think about this. Because I think this LSA program in general has gotten out of hand, and this more or less proves it here. Can somebody assure me that, for instance, this 200,000 to go, this is going to be all, and again, I'm not, I don't have any specific arguments for the Wright Center. I mean, they fulfill, you know, have good functions and worthwhile functions. But how can we, but why can't that money directly be used to go into the neighborhoods, directly to benefit the citizens? I mean, who elects you people? Is it these, is it these companies, is it these nonprofits, or is it us, the public citizens? Is it the citizens, you know, the citizens pay the taxes here, and the citizens elect you guys? The least you can do is try to steer some of this money to, directly to the citizens in some way. I thought originally this program was intended for tax relief, but maybe that's not the case. I still don't get a straight answer from Mr. Piszynski or Mr. Koffer as to what this is supposed to be like. But until that can be straightened out, I think these resolutions should be rejected. And that's not because of any specific problem I have with any of the nonprofits here. But again, the whole nature of this program should be called into question. And if you don't know, if you're not familiar with the program, if you're not familiar with the stipulations, if you don't think that this money should be funneled back into with the stipulations, if you don't think that this money should be funneled back into the neighborhood, then I guess you're going to vote for it. But I think you ought to think twice about it, because the neighborhoods in this city are largely ignored. How much time do I have left? I got a limited time?
About a minute.
A minute? Let me just close with this. Can somebody assure me, for instance, that, I don't want to get offline here, but, you know, it's good, it's good that these are going to nonprofits, organizations, and organizations that seem to be doing, to have worthwhile causes. But when money goes, and I don't mean to get off, you know, off track here, but when money goes to people, to for-profit companies, or for millionaires in the case like Mr. Modo, then it's definitely not a good thing. This is a case, as I see it, of, and I'm not sure how this works, do these people come to you, Mr. Brown, or do you go to them and tell them what money's available? It seems to me, and, you know, like King's College, they need money like a hole in the head, it seems. It seems like there's a lot of pandering. You know what pandering is, right? It's not a nice word. You pander to special interests. How about pandering to the people who elected you and pandering to the people who do the living and the dying in this town? Thank you for your time.
By your own admission, you have no problem with the three applicants. No, you have a problem...
Anybody could apply.
So, basically...
Can I apply?
I'm talking. What you're doing is talking to the wrong people. The program is the program. We don't set the guidelines. Maybe you should be speaking to the state legislators and ask them to review the program if you feel that strongly about it. But right now, we have to deal with the cause we have in front of us. It is the program. These are qualified applicants. I think that all...
I'm not saying they're not.
And they are before us, and they are asking for us just to approve their application to move forward to the state. So, if your problem is with the state, that's who you need to be talking to.
I know the state has the final say, I know that.
They do, and they have all to say. It is a state program. Anyone else, Mayor, did you want to say?
Bill, if you don't mind. Sam, this isn't the first time I've tried to explain LSAs to you, but...
First time I asked you.
No, Bill, let me, let me answer. You had your time. This is my time now, okay?
Got it.
All right. If you went and read the newspapers, that was covered very nicely by the Times Leader and Assistant's Voice. The last round of LSAs went to flood protection, the Brookside levee system. It went to places like Little Theater. It went to the Ostra Hou. It went to the Historical Society. That money's going back into the community, okay? Whether you think it is or not, I don't really care. But the thing is, it's going back into the community. Today, these three organizations provide a very valuable service, whether you think so or not. And everyone that puts in an LSA, it's reviewed, that makes sure that they fit the guidelines. And we have guidelines. And Mark Barrett, who's our grant coordinator, makes sure. He sits with these people, he talks with them, and they provide the information necessary for them to apply. So, we had 17 that applied this month, okay? City of Wilkes-Barre put one in. I put one in for five police cars. We put one in, okay? The gentleman in the back room are going to have new police cars because of the LSA